Sometimes they're very good. I want to give sixty-eight works, huh?
I mean, they, they, they do take that.
They does. Recommend you. And, uh, it says, the guy would not have this point. And, so if he knows.
That part that they wanted taken out, that they just want to put in there, basically says that even if they mishandle, and inmate, if they do it, whether or not we have anything to do with it or not, they are offered shots of water.
But, that's not what we doing anymore.
Well, I mean, but there's, they're basically, that, that is to protect the county, so that they wouldn't say, even if our sheriff didn't do anything to the inmate, if they did something like, um, let's see how, how he put it. Um, it just, except when the city has, that wrong.
But they're responsible, they're responsible for that inmate, whether it goes into, until, until intake.
Well, I think, I think, if it happens outside of the jail, they're, the city is responsible.
Yeah, and then that's the law.
What it's saying here is that, it says, the city firm hereby agrees to defend, identify, hold parties that be issued, and stuff for, and then it says, um, even if they, if the city inmate suffered damage because of actions by the city or its officers, regardless of whether we have anything to do with it or not, it's identified us to keep us out of any trouble if they do something to the inmate, before they get there, so I'm saying, so that's why he wanted to leave it in there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, but like it is, if they did something to the inmate, what, I went down there because I kept getting confused with what they were thinking, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
But once we take control of inmate, I said, I understand if we would be controlled inmate, but I said, if something happens to that inmate, y'all hurt his feelings, or whatever, or anything that happened before the clock in time at the jail, that's on the city's security. You know, they can't bring, they can't bring inmates there that, that they done beat the crap out of, thinking we're going to take care of them. And I, I sat down with Patrick, is that what they explained to you, is that what they're saying?
Yeah.
But they're not saying that if they, if they cut his arm off or beat him up, that we're responsible.
No, I heard that, but we have also an intake questionnaire basically too, that the COs, every inmate that come in, our inmates, they, they have to take this little, like a free arrest questionnaire to make sure that they had any accidents, and beat, or anything like that, or whatever.
Before they're out there, and I think that's the only reason Jason wanted to leave that in there is so that they couldn't say, you know, we're not responsible, whether or not y'all had anything to do with it or not, we're not responsible.
Well, that's like, what, what Patrick explained to him while I was sitting there, and I think Ross was, to me, was a little, doing a little bit of overthinking on this, because at the end of the day, what Patrick said, let me tell you, he said, when one of them comes to suing, you can have any kind of piece of paper you want, they gonna sue us all. So, so there's, there's no thing that you're gonna put in place that, and I, and I think, I think it got to the point where they were overthinking. Is what, is what Patrick said, Patrick said, I don't have, didn't have a problem with leaving that in there, is what he told, told when I was sitting there talking to him. But I said, you know, keep holding where you're holding, or get it squared away.
Well, I think this is the, the, basically, this is the final, you know, the city's agreed with it up to this point, there's that one little bit of controversy on that, that the city actually had them take out one thing that affects the city, so, he said, I'm allowed to take it out, but we'll take it out, you know, that's what they want. And, um, so if everybody's okay with it, and I know we won't talk about it together, but I think it's actually good, and Jason's good with it, I'm good with it, that one is nothing else.
Well, can you send, can we put the final print together? Send a copy, Ryan's gonna be signing for us, right? Send one to him, whatever, whatever's gonna be signed, or whoever's gonna be signing, send a copy to Robbie, to Sheriff, send a copy of the final print to all of us. All of us, now, shall we want a final print?
Yes, it's a good one.
Okay, but it's got some lines, it's got stuff to the side, it ain't, it's been, I don't want lines, I don't want whatever.
This will be out of it, once I accept his edits, it will be just the document itself accepted, just like he edited it, so, I mean, it will take two minutes to take, to accept it.
Send it to Patrick, send it to, because at the end of the day, we're just trying to get it done and get it off.
I know, it's, it's nothing so drawn out, I think everybody's just willing to, to get rid of this point.
Y'all ready? Alright, we're gonna call our work session to order, and, uh, hope everybody had a good Christmas and a new year. Woo-hoo! We're gonna have a little prayer, and then we'll get going, thank you Father for our blessings, Father. We ask you just to, um, help us to make good decisions, and think about what we need to think about for, uh, the season coming up, Father, pray God we make good decisions, give us wisdom, we ask this in the name of Jesus, amen. Alright, what you got? First thing on, you want on the agenda?
We've already kind of talked about the inmate housing, that was nothing for the agenda. Um, same thing with J S U, I was just kind of gonna update you on what's going on with that. Um, I've been in contact with Jason this afternoon, or, yeah, just a little while ago, and sent him my thoughts on their last request that they made. Um, basically, I agree with what J S U wants to do, they want to make a simplified document with their agreement, I'm totally agree with that, it makes sense. Um, they, the only thing I didn't really a hundred percent agree with is it says, we would like to pay our percentage based on review of actual invoices, and then applying the invoice, that invoice amount to the agreed upon J S U percentage of overhead. They want to pay each time based on the actual expenses, that's a little bit of muddy water for me, because it's, if we're going to do that.
That means they're gonna pay procedures, water, water bill.
Yes, percentage of everything, right, and we can, we can actually print a report out, say at the end of the quarter, if we're gonna bill them for the, for the quarter that we just had, we could send them an invoice and just apply their percentage to that, to, well, to the report, not each individual invoice, because that's very time consuming when you do that, but if it had all of the invoices that they're gonna share on a report, and we can certainly filter our accounting software and make it do that, we do it for other entities as well, and apply their percentage, but what that does, that makes it really hard for us to budget how much J S U's gonna pay for that year, because we don't know exactly when, it's, it's very hard to be that precise, and if you're going to do a contract that's only a year or eighteen months, which is kind of what they want to do, um, we're coming around to June, and it'll, it's time to start talking about whether they're gonna renew their lease or not, and then we've got to guess that last quarter, which is always hard to do, which is why it's always a little bit different that exhibit that they get, shows how much expense they actually, we actually had for their percentage of the building. It's always gonna be a little bit different, because you're, you're guessing on several months of the year. So, what I would really like for it to be, I have no problem with, you know, the fact that, the percentage thing, I get that, but I think it should be used in a way that, like we are already using it, just provide them a report at the end of the year, and say, this is where we're at, where we think we're gonna be in June, and if they, if theirs has gone down, then it goes down. If it goes up, it goes up, I'm okay with that adjustment each time, it's just a little bit of a, of a deal to have to invoice the exact amount each time to them.
Too, yeah, I guess, uh, with Jack State far ago, it seems like they're, because, I mean, it's, it's breaking down, they're wanting to do a year, a year and a half, or two years, it's, it's seems like they're not looking to be long term here going forward, to me, just feeling that it. But what I'm saying is, when you get into a situation to do a lease like this right here, I don't know why don't you just look at what, I mean, what we've, instead of making it so confusing, just say, you back into it, you do a three-year lease based on, or two-year lease based on these dollars, and within ninety days of that lease, it renews automatically, so you just look into it, you say, it might be sixteen hundred, I don't know, how much are they paying per year now?
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight, so you just back into it, so it would be, whatever it is, broke down over twelve, over twelve months, don't worry about if we have a plumbing problem, if we have a live bug go out, don't worry, take that off, I think you need to take that off, and we just need to say, uh, we're gonna offer you a one-year lease, pretty close to the number you're talking about, if they're good with that number, and then that takes them out of the way that they're just leasing the space, and it's up to me, it's up to us to take care of the plumbing, and the water, and all the other things that come along with it.
Yes, that won't, I mean, I have no problem providing them a report that lists out what we paid and where their money went, I have no problem with that whatsoever, it's, it's really a simple task when you do it that way, if you have full invoices and all that stuff.
Well, if you break it down into a lease, you don't, you don't worry about that, you don't worry about the floor's getting back, you know, uh, Jack State will call in if they got subs that come, or sub leases that they're doing, whether it's a flash, or somebody comes in at the middle of the night, and just put in there, uh, you know, if you're having a party, or whatever kind of function you're having, that is not Jack State, and they're billing more, and they bring you somebody in, you just have a phase in there, and this is what the additional cost is for that. And it might be that it wouldn't be a cost unless there's damage to the building, you know, if they damaged something, a broken mirror, or something, then they'd be responsible, I mean, just normal wear and carry, they wouldn't be responsible for that.
The other part is, I don't really think they're trying to pay less than what they think they need to, they did, they did, and this is from their attorney.
That's probably.
They're going from their attorney, it's his saying that they should pay less of a percentage, well, the percentage was originally based on square meters of the building, my understanding was it's their portion of the building, and I think that percentage is the same where it is, because it was fair equity from the beginning with, I think it still is. I think that, um, they just are wanting a little bit more oversight of where their money's going, and that's perfectly fine, I mean, if we're doing.
It's gotten way too complicated for what it costs.
It is, for what it, for what, for what we get out of it, but, like I said, if it's just really, I, I think we can make the bill, I think they, you know, they said, provide invoices, and this is from their attorney, provide invoices, I said, what if we just run your report and show you what, what it actually got spent on, just, you know.
There's so much easier for them, for you, if you would just do a one-year lease that renews within two months of whatever said date you say. If you, you know, if you get a letter come, uh, September, that they're gonna do, you know, that they're not gonna renew their lease, well then, you know what to deal with. But then, I mean, to me, that's all they need, Jack State leases space all the time, and I guarantee you, they don't do it the way they do it over here.
Well, that's our, and it's not really, we're doing the, it's a dollar, it's a dollar lease, and this is the cost of.
Kind of their cost sharing department, and, and it was set up that way, and I understand why it was set up great ways to begin with, but it's, it's really more complicated than it needs to be, and they're, and the attorney said that he thought one document would do it, and I really do think one document will do it, I think it's, that's way over complicating it, for, for my reasons, for my benefit. But, um, as far as, you know, how they, they pay us, I, I would rather it be a seven month or a year, divided up in quarters payments, just the way we've been doing that, but we will provide more reporting to them, but I think if we can do that, I think they, they might be willing to.
And one thing, they don't use it enough to say, you know, to mop the floor every day, and to clean, and they don't pay for any of that.
They don't have that portion, you know, they don't pay anything for maintenance, so.
Unless it's, unless it's the, I think they helped us on the, when we were doing the field line stuff, you know, they, they pay it all, for, yeah, but hopefully that's over.
So that's probably, and I did put my comments on what I thought about that to Jason, and, um, I guess, well, we're safely trying to get a document that kind of pulls up all that together, and provide that then, and see if they will agree with that, so. But, like I said, I don't think they're trying to be hard going along with it, I think they just got their attorney involved, and when they did, it got more complicated, and it really needed to be more detailed, and it needed to be for the money that's involved. I mean, you do that, consider that, whether it's, it's worth the trouble, you know, it's one day, it's two hundred thousand, it's one day, it's twenty thousand, yeah, so. Alright, that was the next thing on my list, also, we have, um.
So, we're just gonna work on trying to figure out something.
I'm gonna try to get, with Jason, get one agreement document ready, and put, provide that to J S U, and see if they are.
I'm, I'm gonna try to intervene if that's, unless y'all have a problem, we used to go simple way.
We do.
We can say the lease, that's a bill to us, and here's the cost. And that's what he could say, and I agree with that.
It's getting too complicated.
Yeah, it just costs too much work, now, what would be the ticket, well, if at the church, you know, we could do an agreement with the church, but then, it runs under that umbrella, because right now, you got Jack State's umbrella that's responsible for some of the stuff that goes on there. And I don't like the church once you pay them twenty-eight thousand a year, but, uh.
So, I mean, we leased it to Jack State, and they stopped leasing, that's their problem.
Yeah, that's, that's the way we're doing this.
Yeah, all that blood, that class.
I mean, if you want, you think we should just give a flat amount, but what we have been doing is, begin on that amount, and then at the end of the year, we kind of say, well, you know, this year it actually cost us, and we actually used it for several years, not what it has been costing, and if we need to increase, this is why we need to increase, because we're not meeting that number at this point. And I think that's what, what's always been done, but I mean, if you just think it's a flat amount, that's what it is, and, I don't know, I was just trying to, I was trying to make it something that would be, give them both sides, you know, would be something that would cause a lot of work, extra work for us, because right now, we need this building once a quarter, we're sending the bill, we're sending the check, and that's fine, that's good. And I report to them once a year, and the expense report once a year, that we can do that for them, as we send the bill out. I just don't want the bill to have to change every time, and it just gets more complicated, you start basing the actual invoices, and arguing which invoices you were paid, because by the time they get that expense report showing what they helped pay for, it's already been paid for. So, if they say, well, we, we shouldn't have to pay for it, or this, or whatever, then you get into an issue, and I don't think they're wanting to do that.
Do, do you think that they would agree to just say, let's just break it down into this, y'all know, you know, the tenant commission, if something happens astronomical here, we're just taking it under our wing, just say, we'll just be able to afford it as a lease, you think they'd go for that, or they don't want to go?
That's why I'm gonna try, I don't think they're going for that. I, I think that the talking heads are fine with it, I, I just, attorneys getting away sometimes, in my opinion, they're, they're needed, don't get me wrong, not putting them down. Y'all were not telling Jason, I said that, but.
It just gets more complicated.
He's still mad about, oh, yeah.
He would never get over that.
Okay, so we're done with J S U?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I'm just gonna intervene and see if we can do it like the lease, like y'all said.
That's perfect.
Sounds good.
It, it don't matter what it costs to clean the bathroom, it don't matter what it costs for the power bill, and this is what you gonna do.
That's right.
Okay.
Just around the office, twenty-eight grand, and that's it.
Okay, alright, um, we have two CDs that will mature on January the twenty-fourth, uh, one of those is the million dollars that's going toward the bridge project, and the other is just some of our rainy day fund that we had increased because the city rates were good. So, and I know he's, he's, that, that project's already started, and in fact, we weren't paying the portion out that, you know, was over the million, which was part of the money that you got from.
So, what was that city at as far as the rate?
It was at four-two-five, I'm pretty sure.
So, I guess.
The last offer.
Is it, is it a CD that's, that's locked in, is it something that we need to pull, pull it from there to the back?
The van for the bridge, we need to pull out, the other just need to roll over.
We need to roll it over, and last, the last percentage rate that I heard, and it does change, so, and they won't lock it in for very long, the last I heard was five percent, and it might not be that by now, because it's been a couple of months ago, but I can check on that, and as we, as the purchase is up, maybe that we can lock in now, because.
So where's the million, two-hundred and what, twenty-three thousand?
I don't know, two-hundred and something, I don't know, it's scattered.
But we understand what we need to do on that.
As long as everybody knows what's going on, that's good. Do we need a resolution for that, or anything, it's just a financial decision, right?
I think that we got it, it's just sitting there waiting to pay the bill.
Yeah, and then there was a resolution, extra booty of the CD, we just did that to collect the interest.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing on my list is, um, I was asked to recap our ARPA expenditures, and what we've got left, as far as what's not been, um, so aside for anything yet. Um, and basically, all of our ARPA money has been spoken for, it's the L A T C F money that we still have left, and what we have left is the second trench that was sent to us, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, and some change, that was the last thing that we had gotten, I don't think we've spoken for that, have we, do you remember, I don't think we have. Two-thirty-seven, one-eighty-three, and thirteen cents. Now, there was about six-hundred and some left on some of the S R O equipment that we agreed, I know it was kind of an estimate on what it was gonna cost to equip those S R Os when they came in, there was about six-hundred and some left out of that first trench, but, um, I know we're gonna need more S R Os, so I kind of figured that might end up going, at least that portion of it would end up going to that, so I'll lift that out of the figure, the two-thirty-seven is our second trench that's not been divided up yet.
But this is all money that's gotta be tracked down to the penny, so you can't just say, six-hundred dollars, slide it over there and go.
No, no, it's, it's spoken for, it's been allocated to that by, by resolution, um, it's just what's left to go.
It's gotta be allocated this year.
Right, then forty-two-four.
You know where it's going though, right?
Yes, that's already been allocated.
Except for the two-thirty-seven.
The two-thirty-seven has not been allocated yet, so.
Go ahead.
Let's just split that whole ways, and then we'll all come up with a project, and then, that'll be the end of it.
I got to thinking that we might have already done that, when I was, I mean, just like you said, the mode here, when I sat down, I was trying to say that.
We did one of them, but I don't remember, we did the second one, right?
I don't know if you did on the second one or not either, I'll double check on that, we may not even need a resolution for that, we've already done it, same lot we might have, now that I think about it.
See, well, you only see a couple of your projects first, don't you? Before you make a resolution.
The projects are covered by the ARPA funds, and then what was agreed on to take out of.
Well, we did one, it's, I think it was like eighty-seven thousand, so it couldn't be this one.
It doesn't, the first, the first draft was the same as the second draft of Mount Life.
Right, this happened.
And one of it was for F two fifty, S R O equipment, free explorer, free up fittings, then it's twenty-two, seven, fifty-one left over.
Well, that one was, um, the twenty-two, that was, who's the, the children out there, the twenty-two.
See, so we went back, we went back and made that balance up that.
That's right, because we.
Out of the general fund.
You're right, there is twenty-two thousand left from that L A T C F, but I do think we might have that second trench, I was thinking about it, same lot there is sixty-some thousand, I mean, y'all will find that out, so let me check, I will check, see if there's a resolution.
Well, you got my man divided into four districts, sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars.
So then I did all of it, we did all of it.
Do we need also to divide the twenty-two thousand in?
Um, yeah, at least by the end of the year, you do.
Let's just do it now, I mean, anyways, just keep putting stuff off.
But that does, that twenty-two thousand that's left right there is, um, not including the six-hundred and some dollars, because that number for the S R O equipment right there was the exact number they gave me, so, if you're wanting to steal the six-hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents, if you still want that to go for S R O equipment, we can still do that, since it's already done by resolution, or we can include it once you.
I can just go ahead and go through that S R O, for now, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it'll cover something.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but, these are, these are these resolutions that's three phases long, so it's.
If there's something left, if there's something left over, like if he has a piece of equipment that he buys for an S R O, it is covered, say it's five-hundred-and-eighty dollars, anything that's left, we will, we will come back and address that. It should be sometime soon, I would think, because it's, they've just gotten this.
We're gonna get in the last one, we're gonna get in S R O certified.
Alright, here we need a resolution, uh, what? Go ahead, Jay.
Why don't we take the twenty-two, seven, fifty-one, and the two-thirty-seven, one-eighty-three, and take his six-hundred dollars with a promise that we'll spend it on you, not this money, but we'll pull money out of the general fund, that way, this all taken care of, like.
And it's all cleaned up, so we're trying to get that down to a big one.
But that's still, that's new officers, so.
Well, I don't know that you believe your money is certified by me, I think it was.
You don't wanna hate, right? Yeah. So.
But once you divide that up, you still have to allocate that by the end of the year, once it's settled, so.
Well, let's find out how much it is, and we're gonna allocate.
Five minutes, I can spend mine, that's good.
We could buy a ten spritz.
So you're gonna take twenty-two, seven, fifty-one, two-thirty-seven, one-eighty-one, and six-hundred and whatever dollars you got.
Six hundred and fifteen cents.
We did a resolution for that, okay?
So you, you make that happen?
Yes.
And it'll have to be on, you busy, try.
Not at all, that actually makes it easier for me, when it's clean like that, so.
Yeah, well, trying to get him down to a penny, especially to pay what he's gotta have for this S R O, and move on.
No more money we talking about, you can, you can put that off, and I'm just.
Yes, okay, um, the next thing for me is, um, I was asked to provide the total of the week settlements that we have received so far, and that is a hundred-and-forty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Now, we all know that that's very limited, we've all kind of heard that about what it can be spent on, but, um, that is for your information, right now, we are told to keep it in a specific fund for that ongoing money, until, of course, it's, it's in our general fund, but it's actually separated accounting wise, what portion of our general fund is in that ongoing settlement, it's restricted.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman, when we were down at Auburn Conference, the gentleman spoke on that, I asked him a question, I said, 'cause he was going through all this stuff, oh, you can use it for dope classes, and this, and that, and whatever, and I said, well, how long you gotta spend this money? He said, as long as you want, so I said, if it's as long as we want, what's this thinking, I say, you didn't forget about it? I mean, 'cause you're not gonna be able to do anything that's gonna benefit us anyway.
But just to make sure that, that we can have it for a period of time.
That you can use the interest.
What the man said, he, he gave a speech on it down there, and he said, there's no time limit, he said.
But, the interest may out of, would you ever use it, like the one in the heat, go ahead.
Or the big machine.
Well, that's a question you need to ask, but I don't see why it would be tricky, 'cause it's not, it's not settled money.
I know, some, some, some funds I have second floor are literally not allowed to earn any interest, I mean, we're not allowed to earn any interest on it.
Why don't you come out? I mean, this is not all of it anyway, we got more coming.
Oh, we getting, we're getting more coming.
But, but, what you can use it for is, we just spend a lot of time, and we're not getting nothing out of it, you know.
Sorry, I guess that's what we need to find out, but, but there is no resolution on this right, we do today.
I don't think, I don't think we can do anything about it right now, we're just gonna, I'll follow up on it. Okay, um, let's see, my next thing is, um, Patrick Nolan sent me a request for a couple of surplus items, I think one of them was the Tahoe that was wrecked, and the other ones is it has a bad motor, so that's a surplus resolution he's asking for. We're just getting it done, we got it. So.
Yes, sir.
You get something to surplus too, if we put it all in one red week?
Unsurplus.
Oh, unsurplus, that's right.
So that, can Sanji do it on the surplus stuff?
There's a recorder, how do you do that?
Circles and unsurpluses, take resolutions.
I think you probably, what, did you?
Well, I did few resolutions, he wanted, but I thought we considered, didn't it?
Because mine, you know, I rescind a portion of a previous resolution.
I don't know, it'd be new business.
Yeah, it's good that, I would think, so that we can use.
What, when we surplus that, where does that money go?
Well, when we surplus, it goes back to their, to their, um, budget.
And there's two?
Which was using that money.
Well, see, that's gonna be the first thing that we can send to Sanji, surplus, for the sheriff's part, okay? I mean, other than our fences, and.
Okay, um, let's see, the next thing that I have is, can you pass this around, please? I've kind of mentioned this a couple of times in the house, and I've put this together, and this is by no means a full set of, or a full list of everything, but I am requesting another employee from my department, um, you know, I work fifty to sixty hours a week, probably ninety percent of the weeks that I've been here, um, trying to catch up, trying to get a hold of everything, trying to do the best I can, and I just don't feel like that I'm able to put forth the effort that I need to do to see things as a whole, I get so bogged down in all the details of the things that I have to handle myself all the time, that I don't feel like I'm doing the best job I could be doing, I really feel like I need another person that has, um, an accounting degree, at least an associate's degree, and some experience in accounting, not just. not just somebody fresh out of school, to help me with some of these things. And these are some of the things that I think a person could really help me with. I just listed a little bit of that and I think that if I have someone to help me do these things, first of all, they will serve as a backup for me because I'm perfectly healthy, but doesn't do no guarantee I'm gonna be perfectly healthy even tomorrow. So, right now, we don't have a person here that knows the whole entire payroll process, the whole entire AP process. I mean, it would be a real struggle if I was unavailable. It would be hard to pay vendors right now. I need a person that actually has accounting experience to help me do those things.
Do you have an idea of what kind of cost and I think?
I do. And I figured it, I mean, it is a little bit something that can, we can talk about, but I had our HRO run some numbers and based on the positions that we have here and kind of where they are, and also found an old job description of a finance officer. And I figured it'd be a pay grade eighteen, which would cost approximately sixty-one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. That is for a whole year, obviously, and which we wouldn't have them a whole year this year. But, and of course, they're not enrolled, but.
That makes it a lot.
That's everything. That's everything. Sixty-one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. But I also feel like I'll be able to provide some things that I'm not providing right now, so we'll let you get a little detail on that.
Hey, you can down here on the bottom, ten ninety-nine, that's insurance, that's HR's job, man.
Not ten ninety-nines, ten ninety-nines are for vendors and HR doesn't do that. She does the W twos, but she does not do the ten ninety-nines.
Why would she not do the ten ninety-nines?
She doesn't have.
She has, I mean, she already has most of all that, that problem in her system, she would.
She has, she has got the ability to go into a villa if she does not know our AP system like we did, or how our maintaining our vendors works and what those constraints are, who gets ten ninety-nines. I understand that it's always been done on this side. I'm not saying that she could not do that, certainly she's smart and we can figure out how to do it. But we are the ones that enter, are all the vendors, not myself so much as Krista and Emily, and make sure that we have the W nine's and have all the information that we need for these people and have their insurance certificates and that kind of thing. So it's kind of been on this side. I'm not saying she could not do that, that would be one thing that would be less on my list. Now, I will say this, I pretty much got Krista where she hands me a list and I know that's who I sent tonight and I took it and I brought my ATRX and sent them. So it's gotten more simple as I've delegated things and everybody, as we learn more, but it is, it's still a process that you have to get through each time. It's not a quick process either. Cause it's, you know, you really have to go in and make sure that those people are actually supposed to get those ten ninety-nines and make sure everything's reconciled.
So at this point, as far as.
Yes, sir.
So at this point, as far as like Melissa, we wouldn't, if we liked the best one, we wouldn't be using her anymore, correct?
Um, well, I mean, that's entirely up to you all. I did say that put on my list that it would allow me to have, I feel like I'd have a little more time to be able to analyze things and be able to educate myself a little better on how the, you know, the financial statements are put together. I will say that I have really struggled with, you know, I was a new person and then we had, everybody was pretty much new at what they were doing at one time. So I've spent a lot of time just making corrections. And it's things like not using the right accounts to do transfers and all that, a lot. And I'm kind of finally starting to see the light of day on that. But I've spent a lot of my time just doing corrections and things like that. And I would, I would like that not to be the case. I would like to have that person that has, and you know, some mechanic to learn this from me and be able to do a lot of this checking AP, things like that. And when I say check AP, I'm talking about look at every single invoice, make sure it's coded correctly, make sure it's part of that person's budget, make sure the department, everything's correct on it, that it has a PO if it's required to. All those little things I have to check every single time I do AP.
Let me say this, when we were looking at, what is this job over here that Emily does?
It's finance clerk.
Okay, when we done that, you know, we increased the pay on that job and then increased the, I guess with her, we're waiting on her.
She's not there. She's not, she's not at the increased rate and she's also not at that pay grade. She started a pay grade below because she doesn't have the educational experience or her educational degree and experience that she.
What degree would it require in this?
An associate's degree and I want to say three years of experience in doing financials and accounting.
And, but I think, maybe I messed up the same one, just saying, when we put that job out, we put it out for what? Three years' experience in associate degree?
We, I think it was a two-year, if I'm not mistaken, I've looked back at it, but, I mean, and certainly she does have some experience. She's got that much time and experience, but it's not, the educational part of it is not there. And I am willing to give her some time to do that and I do appreciate the fact of what she can do because she does know the accounting business now and she's getting better and more learned as she goes. But I need someone with accounting experience and I would need it two years from now, I need it.
Mission here.
Need to be careful. I mean, we can talk about administrator, we can talk about HR, we can talk about nine-to-one director. We can't really talk about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to really watch. My question is, what's everybody's salary here?
Your three positions, basically, without saying, without saying names, you got three positions, right?
I mean, she's, she's a art clerk.
She's a commission clerk.
The other three, you and the other two, you and the one, okay.
I only have one person that really is, well, they both work for me. I mean, they do, they report to me.
So a pretty close figure, what, what's in it?
I know what.
What I'm getting at is, instead of hiring people, at some point, maybe you could just take this outside.
All of you can?
No, we can't do all of them outside, but you can do parts of it outside. I mean.
I guess my question would be, are we backing up? Because these positions, we've already, we have them in place and now you're not adding.
Well.
And, you know, we're dealing with top budget now, so you. Well, when that position came open, maybe you should have looked for that.
I did.
For, at that point, and I.
I really did. I really did try to find someone with an associate's degree in accounting. I did, I interviewed, I interviewed a number of people, I, we ranked them on, Emily and Brown and I sat and ranked them and scored them. And we could not find anyone that had what we needed.
Had applied that had finance background.
That there was some people that applied that had maybe associate's degree in business, but not in accounting. And I need someone that is accounting, I really do. I need someone that has a working knowledge, a business and credit to work, what your normal balances are in revenue accounts, what your normal balances are in expense accounts. If they don't know that basic information, accounting information when they walk in the door, they're no use to me. And I hate it that it is that way, but I just truly need someone that can hit the ground and with a little bit of training, figure out how this works. Now, I understand those type, I get it, I totally get it. I would be willing to settle for a part-time person if that was an option for me, but I need someone that can do this. And I need someone that is a backup for me because you won't be in a mess if I'm gone tomorrow. And I can train my people, but I can't train them to do journal entries and corrections and correct transfers and to do the things that need to be done and the analysis part of it each month.
Mission here.
I was on the assumption that when we gave the raise for this position and Emily's in, we just talked, we worked more directly with administrator so that we would not get caught with the fancy, you know?
Well, you can only train someone if they have the educational background, that they can understand what you're saying. I've written cookies, notes, I've tried and like I said, she's learning, but I really just need someone that can take that step.
They don't get in trouble, we need, we need. I mean, administrator, HR, all that, that's all public, but everything else is not public.
Um, but if you're, if you're asking for a position, you're asking for a position and you've got something, is there any of you that wants that resolution on new business to hire someone?
What I would like is maybe a couple of commissioners come in and sit down in your office and listen to you and that way you can discuss what you need instead of trying to figure it all out with that.
Aren't we still scheduled for evaluations in the morning?
And someone's got to be.
For some evaluation.
Yeah, there's over here. So let's, Kay, come in and sit down and go with it.
And, you know, I'm a person, I'm structured, you know, just very independent and it's very hard for me to ask for help when I need help. And if I'm saying to you I need help, it's because I need help. And I'm not exaggerating, I'm not trying to get out of work. I love to work. I work all the time, over eight and a half hours yesterday. I mean, on a holiday and that's not unusual for me to do that.
And I, and I do realize that, and this is kind of like the hospital. You know, even though you got holiday off, you got some days off or whatever, the same amount of work's gotta be done every week. Same amount of tasks have gotta be completed. We're not, you know, I agree with that, we're not, you know, you're, you're in a salary position, so. And I do, I asked y'all if y'all would take time individually to go talk with her and y'all decide what you want to do. I think it's, if she's asking for help, I think y'all do need to consider that or find another way, or we need to find a way because we would. I mean, y'all can all see the danger if something happened, you know?
And I think that's what we're trying to do, and it's strong end of sixty-one thousand dollar increase.
How shocked is that?
Cheap.
Cheap, yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not a really high pay grade personally, it's one that's just above the two employees that I have right now to hopefully be sorted by my right-hand person that would be able to go between and free up my time because I'm saying I can do more financial analysis, I can do, there are more things that I can do that would be more value to the commission if I had time to do those.
Could be more of an administrator too.
Yes.
Kay.
I know, I know you work hard, I'm not gonna dispute that, but when you talk about all this money, you said you couldn't get anybody for the other position that you felt was where you wanted it. How you know you can get somebody for sixty-one?
I don't know that opinion, but I know that I can try and I will say this, I'm not looking to go and find somebody in two weeks. I've got, I can spend a little longer to try to find that person. I can try to reach out and do a little more advertising and try to, you know, spend just a little more time getting somebody. I know before I was kind of, you know, I'm a big down on person in a couple of weeks, I had to kind of get somebody. But anyway, that's, that's the situation. I don't know that I can find somebody that I can try.
Kay, what, holy skies.
Is there any of this stuff right here that could be sent to an outside vendor?
I don't know whether anything could, I mean.
I mean, I own several businesses and I was gonna tell you a trick, I didn't do them books on the money, my paycheck I do. But I need what to figure for. But there's gotta be some of this stuff we could send to an accountant or something. I mean, we need to compare that to, to this sixty-one thousand, we need to compare ourselves, you know? Is, is that?
And I guess that's my question too, is that we need to look at highs and I hate to eliminate people's jobs, but maybe this, we may can get to be doing something a little bit different than what we're doing now. Because when I first came in office, we were running the office with some amount of people. So I guess I'm sorry about this.
I know that it's, I know that it's varied, there's been, at times there's been three people and sometimes there's been four. And I've, I've heard, I actually have seen job descriptions, job descriptions, when there were three employees that were accounting administrator. And there was a little bit, not just a little bit, a little bit of difference in separation of duties, which is helpful. I'll give you an example. Right now, unless I'm going back and doing an analysis to see what all revenues we have and literally looking line on by line to see if we are missing revenues, some, a department could not be sending out our checks that we need or we might not be getting a check from the state that we're supposed to get. It might be months without us noticing that, that revenues not there. It is a lot to keep up with and it is a lot of analysis that is required. That's the kind of thing I need to be able to look, sit down and go live and make sure that we're not missing anything, make sure that our revenues are staying where they should be, make sure our expenditures are where they should be and just even print A and E reports. If I print A and E reports, I just send them out, it doesn't do it. I need to actually look at those, make sure they make sense, make sure the detail is correct, make sure, you know, department's not spending money out of line on them, that they didn't even have a budget for it.
Are you cross-training any of your, any of the jobs with our other positions that we have over here?
And we have been cross-training. I mean, we do it all the time. I mean, I have Krista doing new things, I have Emily doing new things. They're doing more than they've ever done. It's just, I still have so.
But they do them more than that their position requires?
No, they're not. They're just, because their position has, you know, their, all the descriptions have got a lot of the overlap, a lot of overlap in some of the jobs, so they're not doing anything they're not supposed to. And then there's also, of course, whatever I ask you to do is always part of every job description or any, let's say you do it anyway. So at times they do more than others, it just depends on how very busy I am, which right now I'm just, I'm just wide open as far as I can go with getting everything done. But the thing that I think that surprised me is that you think, well, you know, when I get the end of the year done, I'll have a little free time. That never happens. There's always another financial that you're gonna do. There's always another analysis, there's always new contracts coming, there's always, you know, something coming up.
All right, let's, let's move to, we know she's told us how she feels and what she thinks she needs. Y'all need to go read with her individually and try to figure out and we need to come up with a possible solution. I mean, this is what we're gonna put a resolution on. I, I think we're gonna do a good job of settling, we're gonna tell them that's what you need.
And, and I, and I can tell that we need somebody. One thing I'd like to say is the job description and exactly what we're going after.
Is that, is that what that is?
Well, it was just a little, a little, it wasn't really a job description, but I can each one.
Job description also, you need more of each of the employees that we already have. We need to save your job description.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I think, we're gonna get you some help, I mean, but we just want to make sure that.
Well, yeah, I think we know we need, you're saying, hey, I need help and we need to look at it as a commission. And nobody's gonna make a resolution today, all right? You got another resolution? All right, Lynn, you got something?
I better go. You tell us. Talk about the unsurpluses in the truck. That was the October sixteenth, the seventeen, the item number six, that's the ninety-eight forward.
All right, we'll put that on the business, everybody do that. All right.
All right, the grant writer, I talked to Terry Aco with Community Consultants. He is willing to take the campaign on. There is a procurement process to do that, to make his fees eligible under the grants, so the grants recover his, his fees as well. It's kind of a bid and out process is what it is. But it's a three-year contract. They work on, they fill out the grants, if you were awarded the grants, then that's a percentage of the grants. So really no upfront cost. They track them, keep up with them, see something they feel like we're interested in, they're gonna bet a snow. So that's just kind of how that process would work. Inside the state, he says he has about eighty percent success rate with just the DECA and. So he does pretty good with those. Some of these federal grants we was talking about last time, he, he's gotten some of them in the past, but he also says that's a real big shot in the dark for small counties. real big shot in the dark for small counties, that you gotta have a lot of, a lot of the backing to, to get some of those. But he still has billable at some of those.
So this would be considered services, right?
This would be services.
Do you want, we need to put this on as a resolution? You got a question right here?
Do you know what his percentage is?
He did not tell me what his percentage is, it's part of that whole procurement. When, when we bid that procurement package out, basically he replies to that as a, like it's a bid. He'll, he'll bid, bid on that percentage right now.
And his is included most likely, most of it?
No, he didn't tell me what, what that number was, so.
So we need to put that on your business.
Everybody do that? Your business?
You don't need to do something, still, no.
No, no, your business, right?
Me did.
Okay, and it's what it's called?
It would, he calls it, he calls it a procurement process.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, there's some of those on consent agenda.
Well, we could, uh, there's no reason we couldn't put it on the consent agenda because he doesn't, we're not gonna know anything until it's been processed anyway.
But it's.
If it's gonna be a resolution to, to put it out to bid, it's good. Okay, all right, y'all put that on the consent. Okay. Let's, let's warm this meeting a little bit. That's what I was trying to do.
Um, last thing I got, the convenience center down at Hollis. Right now from a security standpoint, Wise has got a plastic tank buried by halfway in the ground, we're having a pump about every quarter. Um, I'd like to go ahead and do a second tank about sixty foot of line down there just so we're done with that whole ordeal. Trying to remember to get that done, um.
I'll let it run out and run, what do you do there?
We, I put a tank again out there while I had everything.
Yeah, that's a good thing to do, yeah.
And then because I didn't have one at Heflin, I mean, at Hollis, but we need to go ahead and get that situated, that one all that's much, isolated by itself and I think it'll be to remember every three months.
This is gonna be a different fund, all right?
This will come out of that, uh, the dollar.
What do you call that fund?
Environment.
Environment fund.
Leo, are we getting any more closer with the gentleman and, uh?
Every time I talk to him, he says he's a hundred percent interested and he'll call me right back, I just never hear anything back.
Do we just, I'll get with you.
All right, let's, on some task here, environmental fund, does this need to be a resolution, you need, you know how much money?
The, the, about forty-eight hundred is what it, is what the quote was.
Y'all wanna say five thousand?
That's what I just said, so let's just say five thousand. I'm gonna get working inside of that.
Consent agenda or, everybody do consent? Okay.
That's good.
All right, Sheriff?
This was monthless stats, uh, for December, oh yeah, a hundred point five answer reports, fifty-three civil papers there. Uh, that was nine felony want to serve, eleven misdemeanor want to serve, thirteen on you felony arrest, sixteen misdemeanor and twenty-nine tolls. Um, miles driven, uh, seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven miles driven, twenty-four hundred store checks. Uh, Sam's crew, they had six hundred and forty mile hours, two hundred and sixty-seven back to trash, two hundred and eighty-six tires and a hundred and one other items picked up. Uh, Fred, talked to him, he said he fixed some of the lights, uh, back there in the back, but he's waiting on the lift. So I guess, I said, forward up, one they use other schools. Supposed to be getting fixed, he said he's having a wait on it before he can fix the other lights. He did get the kitchen sink fixed, uh, got the gate, the salad port working. Uh, the intercom, he said he traced the wire down, uh, that's messed up, but he said he thinks it's a board and they gotta wait on that guy to come shake the board. Then they got all the lights working in the sales, or he's working on the lights in the sales, we're gonna get that fixed. That's ready, all right, yeah.
Do you have anything on your door here?
Uh, I have.
Uh, I think I've got, I, I, I was gonna tell Fred that I've got some door closers that, that can be, if you want, and you can have them, they're about two hundred and fifty dollar door closers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've got two of, three of them at the house, I just wanna give him Fred, let him see if they're gonna work. And if they'll work, he'll bring however many you need for all those sales.
All right.
So.
We can.
What about the vehicle that most of the miles you were gonna buy?
Oh, we got it, yeah, we got it, uh, I said a lot earlier, we talked to Stivers, the explorers, one of them is on the lot, that's it. Uh, one of them's supposed to be there at seventeen, another one's supposed to be there at nineteen, so we should have all three of them by the end of the month, maybe. But now we're just waiting on, I guess, the check for the, you gotta hit it maybe on the total one, so we're just waiting on that, yeah.
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
Ask Lee, just play his plays, come on, tell him.
But you've got the check, paper, the vehicle that was at, busting around, right?
I didn't, I was out.
No, no, you're talking about the insurance check, no.
No, you're talking about the check paper car, right?
No, I didn't pay for it.
Okay, what was the check over that today?
I'll pull it back out and see, just letting you know that it can be, it's, um.
It might have been for the corner.
It might have been, well, no, that was taken out of, um, just paid the state, cause that came off a.
I just taking granted it to be, cause you shouldn't bring it.
I'm saying that it was, but I'm not, I'm not.
I would have said that, I would have, I said, I was out, see, but I was nothing, I didn't wait for it.
I bet it's in this, I bet it's in this AP, I bet it's in, that's, I bet that's the check we're talking about. I was pretty sure it was, I mean, I told you it was earlier, I'm sure that's what it was.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Coler?
I don't really have anything to report other than we're bringing in money, still bringing in money. Uh, we're, we're down to about fifteen hundred parcels, give or take a, a few, uh, to collect them, so this season has gone way smoother than I thought it would with, with the economy and everything, but, um, we're, we're collecting and hopefully you'll have all of your money here in a few weeks. Um, maybe we won't have a tax sale, that'd be great. Um, if y'all ever need any, you call right now, I try to respond pretty quick, so, and I appreciate what y'all do.
Okay, thank you guys. All right, any questions, Joyce? Um, a few things, the check that we sent to the Board of Education, are they content with that, did that help them? Have we heard?
I have sent them the, all of the information and I have not heard anything else back from them. We've been sending them a check every month.
But we think we're square with them, we think they're getting half of what?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I just wonder how they're just thinking there, how they're just going for them. Didn't know if anybody heard, anybody else heard anything?
Yeah, I heard about it through the hallways.
I know, uh, I saw where, um, ACCA mentioned that they may be trying to push for, uh, internet tax and raising that?
The, uh, the legislature is gonna bring up a one and a half percent added to this, as you take the tax going to state education.
Oh, out of the, which I'm opposed to, out of the, what's currently being poured?
No, addition.
Addition.
It'll go from eight to nine and a half. So if you were something up Amazon, you'd be paying nine and a half because they passed that.
Yeah, one and a half will go to the schools.
I don't think the ACCA is gonna be on board.
Okay, I saw, I read some of that, yeah. Old doors, old courthouse doors, we've got a bunch of doors and stuff in the, down there, uh. Miss, goes way back, Miss Sanders bid on one of those and got, got one for like fifty cents, it's on bid, but we got a bunch of doors and stuff. I mean, they really, can we make that surplus and?
The, the thing, I think the reason they've been hanging on to it is because there are the old doors that was taken out. And back when Ronnie was here, I said, why are we hanging on to these doors? I mean, you can't, there's no way ever using, unless some historical society might want them to play with them or something like that, you can probably surplus them, there might be some people, there's a bunch of stuff down there that can be surplus. Especially those doors. You know anybody who wants them?
Yeah, I do, I do. I just wonder, what do we need to do? I mean, it, they might, they're not worth nothing, but they might.
Yeah, you could, well, it'd take, and then you can't use them in public buildings now. Cause you know, they gotta be handicapped accessible, there's no way to turn them into that, there's no way they're ever gonna be reused at the courthouse, so they're just basically been in the way all this time, I think we'll move them.
But we, they are surplus though, aren't they?
I don't know if I surplus them, I think, the doors have been sitting there before I come in the office. There were some of them that was down in the basement, it took us forever to get out of that hole down there when they got, they figured out to get them in there.
I think we made those doors surplus because we put some up for sale, we got written bids and what, the only bid we got was fifty cents.
You know, sometimes it just goes away.
Just surplus them after?
I think that was it, but, you know, nobody, I think it's like, well, right, you know, people come over and they say this big old door, oh, this is beautiful, and everything, they bet fifty cents or a dollar. Well, guess what, we wind up being the storage for.
Right, because he did.
It's been, it's probably, we're talking.
For tables, they're, you know, they're.
It's been over twenty years since we've been doing it.
Using one of them now, yeah.
So that's how long them doors have been down there in the way.
Try that again.
And they're big doors, I mean, they're like, they're not, they're more than eight foot, aren't they, high?
Well, now my surplus, they're getting, or if you wanna move, I can get it, I can, we can make them move away. But if you got, you got somebody that can use them or something like that.
I just know we got a bunch of stuff down there and I know it's just hard, I think we've done a good job, it's just hard to get in there to work. You know, probably working on.
Oh, that's right.
A collection machine's coming up, I got that room, it's nice, but I got, I, I need to spread out two tables to, to fix, work on the machines.
Yeah, we're probably just getting there, moving.
Huh? Yeah. Okay, I just want to ask.
How would you get rid of them, anybody got an idea? You want, you want? Yeah, but can the county, and just have a bill of check, a lot of checks that's ten cents to the county commission? I, I'll give fifty dollars for all of it and I'll show you how to boom, boom, big fire. I mean, I mean, that's about the way I see it, you know, most of that stuff down there needs to get thrown in the dumpster. But, but I don't wanna do it and get in trouble.
Yeah, I don't either, I mean, it's, it's over something that's.
If, 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 if something ain't worth nothing, if you got wood products that's worth nothing, like broken desks and tables, can you not just?
And there's a few things that belong to the chamber that are still down there too, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's one or two things that belong. Yes, miss?
I was just, I was just wondering about that as well, because we have some broken desks and things that go to there to die. And it would be nice for them to either be able to be disassembled and thrown in the garbage can because, I mean, they're of no value to, I mean, a broken desk is a broken desk. I mean, broken chairs that, you know, the hydraulics don't work on them anymore, they're just sitting out there dying.
Why would you not just put them in the trash?
Well, you tell me and I, I, I'll be happy to put them in the trash from here on out. Unlike them and I don't wanna be in trouble either. Because they were bought with county money, with tax dollars, I, I think that that's why they either have to go to surplus or you have to go through the steps to trash.
That was a resolution on there, says whatever the building is, give him the authority to go through and discard what's not useful.
Thank you, I would do that.
Do, so.
They were all on the hook.
You got time to do that the next week or something, just do a description of?
Believe me, I got.
How many doors and?
I'll have the inmate wagon up there and we will be chomping.
Don't throw it away, yeah, throw it away, yeah, but just, we gotta make the surplus first, make sure we just got.
You said a week, there's two weeks before next meeting, okay, when you start talking to that person over there, you're talking two weeks. But don't say you want me to do something next week and then you're gonna be talking about.
Can't you just do a resolution and not listen to item by item, just say, whatever, whatever you call that storage down there, I don't know what you call it.
Now it's.
Just say, clean out that building, allow him to, to say if it's good or bad and be able to throw it away or whatever, that's all we need, man.
All right, yeah. Has y'all seen any trouble with that?
There ain't no good, there ain't no bad.
So is that consent or?
I'll meet you down there.
You're making a little consent if somebody says something.
This is Mary.
It's Mary.
Mary.
All right, I just, I just know we got a bunch of stuff down there, so, what, yes, sir.
Did, uh, the, uh, voting company and all this, did you get that taken care of?
We agreed to. That way.
We signed that agreement, all for the company to do the, with Secretary State for the, we signed that last time.
Okay, so you did, can I start with my list?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I can throw this up here, but I've been getting a bunch of complaints about HR not being available for phone calls or, or, you know, sit down and talk to. I don't know who, I don't know who her boss is, but somebody, I know that, but I'm saying, we don't want them to crunch into her office, somebody just needs to go sit down.
Okay.
And say, hey, it's for make the floor, somebody needs to answer the phone.
All right, I'll be there, okay. And that's just the complaint, you see?
That's it, I've got, and I've got some from department heads and I've got a bunch of them from, from employees.
You're saying he's not that?
Just saying she won't answer the females or the phone or, I don't know, being this true, I haven't talked to her about it, so, I'm just throwing it out there.
All right.
I got several of them.
All right, anything else specific besides those things?
Oh, I just, well, I mean, on HR.
I'll talk to HR, okay.
Um, lodging tax, did we ever find out anything on lodging tax? Or do we need a resolution or?
I did, uh, I did talk to him in Montgomery about the lodging tax. There is something that they're trying to put together coming up in actual legislation and all, about lodging tax. And it's more gonna be rejoice is because they're gonna make sure that these people are not paying homestead on these pieces of property and their rent on my own.
They're not on the, um, none that they currently have or the ten, whatever the number was, somebody, yeah, Lynn, and I spoke about this. The, the ones that, that he found online, we all had all, all of those. And we actually have three more that we're adding this year. Um, so if we find them through VRBO for, um, Airbnb, any of those facilities, my girls are, are tracking that all the time, uh, Facebook, any of those that pop up and say this is for rent, they gonna find it. And so we're collecting property taxes based on them being a non-occupied, um, residence taxed at twenty percent, which is the highest percentage that we can collect them, and we're taxing them on the contents with, inside that, um, home.
But, yes, sir, are we collecting lodging tax?
That is not my.
I know, gee, that was my, that was what we discussed last month.
And, and what I talked to him about, you know, about the lodging tax, to track it and all, they're saying that, you know, that you would have to have one person designated to do nothing but that, track it down. And they do and we doubt, they have that one person that, that literally calls and says, I want to rent this for the week. How much is it, and then they're turning around and sending them an invoice for the taxes due on it. But it takes one person that's dedicated to that. They are looking to resolve this issue coming up our next session, but right now.
But like, when I rent a hotel room, there's lodging tax on the bill, okay? And when you, when a, a vendor collects lodging tax or sales tax or anything, it's their responsibility to get it where it needs to go. So I'm asking, do we get the damn lodging tax? I mean, that's my question, has, has anybody seen five dollars for a lodging tax?
We had an increase on our lodging tax, our lodging tax. Doesn't part of that go to the fire departments?
I'm not sure where it goes, I just wondered if we get any.
In the past, let me, let me give you, for example, in the past, the fire department's got a, um, a check one time back maybe six or eight years ago, that was over six thousand dollars per fire department. Where that lodging tax had been, I guess, building up, building up, the state, um, Mount Chee Haw, the state park. All of that is subject to lodging tax, somebody has to know where that lodging tax is going. I don't know who that person is, but you should be collecting. Every time they rent out a chalet up there or a room up there, you should be getting that.
Or even at the hotel.
The hotel in Heflin, it does, it does a lot of business, that you should be collecting that.
So do we need a resolution to appoint somebody?
Want you to do anything?
To find out about that? To find out about that?
We can provide the amount that we, we, um, collect each month.
Okay, but gee, we are collecting some lodging tax.
It shows on our, uh, financial, I mean, on our. But the problem is, 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 but that's where I'm telling you that they say that it's hard to track it because you've gotta have that person calling to verify this person's renting that piece of property out. The ones like the Chee Haw, all of those are easy. It's these.
Modern blocks.
Yeah, it's these modern block things.
But you can only charge for when it's being rented out. So if you call and say, I wanna rent it this week to send them a bill, that don't work.
That's what they're doing.
I'm just telling you, you can't say, I rent for a week and then send them a bill for a week that you don't rent. That's on your.
What they're doing, what they're doing is they're calling and saying, I have it this weekend. They say it's not available this weekend. Somebody's in, so.
But they got, yeah, but what I'm saying is.
They just admitted that it was.
But what I'm saying is they should be, if they're collecting it, and if they got a business license, then what, it needs to be audited. Audited somewhat. If you've got a place that's been renting a, a place for three or four years, it's no different than we have to pay taxes back. If you find out they got it, you go down and you, and you go to, no different than, you say, how much taxes, how much of the tax have they paid on lodging tax for two years? And they say none, and you audit them and they, and they had at least say sixty percent for those two years, then you will fit that. Then that's when you wanna send a bill. That's when we're gonna do a bill.
That's for the state.
But a couple of times like that, they hear horror stories, people that's doing that, hear horror stories where they've been collecting it or they haven't been collecting it. They will wake up and say, and that, and you gotta have a couple of those horror stories. I had to pay sixty-five hundred dollars for last year of lodging tax I didn't pay. That's. But just to call and say, hey, you know, if we got it booked this weekend, we gotta find out, this individual has a license, how much lodging tax have they paid a year? We should be able to get that number from whoever's collecting our tax.
You got that? He, you said lodging tax, you did or you just ran?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about on the bed and breakfast.
Maybe we need public relations help. I mean, if somebody's doing this and you put taxation, that scares the hell out of people. And maybe they'll do what they're supposed to do because they don't wanna mess with nobody on taxation. Maybe we need better PR.
And, and the problem is this, this is becoming a big thing. Used to, you didn't have these issues. But now you're having everybody that's renting the building, renting them out at the weekend.
Oh, yeah, you figure out TS now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Ron, did I have to buy a license in your office? I don't think any of mine was.
It's a business, I mean, it's a business.
I don't think, I don't think.
Is it a service?
I think so. I don't think you have to have a business license.
And again, you that have something, no different than a, than, you don't have something in place that, we say, okay, there's, there's something in place for a junkyard license. But you never put them in place for a BB and, uh, what do you call it?
Airbnb.
Airbnb. But guess what? There's no place there to go get a license.
Well, it's, it's, it is something new. The last.
It is.
It's not typical. When I first come into office, you only had rent property and hotels, you know?
And, and that's the reason they're looking into it and looking at doing something coming up because it is wrong.
I'm sorry. Uh, can I? Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I brought this up every year I think I've been in office, but we need to look at postage machine. Stamps that fix and go up again. You do a bunch of it, you do a bunch of it, she does a bunch of it. I mean, we, we doing thousands of dollars a year in postage. Why can't we at least get somebody to come and say, this is what it costs?
It's gonna cost me about twelve grand a year to do it and the postage was less than that.
You've already checked into it?
I did. I checked into it one time. Now upstairs in certain clerk's office, they have one.
Does, um, does it pay off for them? Somebody, somebody needs to check into it. So I'm just, I'm jarring Lisa on that.
Can, can one, what, can one, we just have one department and everything go to via?
And, and that was my proposal years back was that I would get it and, and then the county could.
Everything from your office.
Yeah, because it would be easier through my budget than it would be.
Yeah.
Through any others.
We don't like playing.
Well, listen, you gonna check on that again tomorrow?
I can check on it again. It was, it was, I think Pitney Bowes is, is typically the, the company, Pitney Bowes, I think is one of them.
Turn around and look at your office, our office, Ron's office and nine-one-one.
Yeah, commission, yeah.
It may be less than.
So we bring all our posties to you and have it weigh and then?
Yeah, or, or we could centralize it here, um, while, I mean, I, I, my postage is particularly certain times of the year. So, you know, for me carrying it, that wouldn't be a big deal, you know, but if it was something that we could have centrally located that I can.
I bet the machine you could probably put in those sheriff's offices.
I think that it's small enough that we could probably. I, I, I haven't even looked at them. I just know that they exist. And upstairs, we should have asked Warren Sorrell. He's the one that has the one in the county because every time we mail, that's the question. Do y'all not use one? That would be, you say.
We'll check into that. Okay. And my last comment is, everybody hold your breath and say, just let me get through. I want to sue somebody on water sales. USDA or somebody to bring it before a judge to get some clarification about spending taxpayer money on private property. I have, uh, before Meg left, she recommended that. She says, that's all I know to do. Mike Rogers just won't even accept my calls anymore. His people won't accept my calls. They won't return my emails. And, uh, the two USDA guys that we talked to, Lee and I and Lisa, that's what they said. Go before a judge and get a ruling. So I don't know what the process is. I don't know if you can call it suit, but.
Play it for a judgment, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I, we need to pick a lake out and get Jason to bring it before a judge. Because in the future, at some point, this will cost a lot of money and nobody wants to deal with it.
Y'all wanna put that on his agenda to, to, uh, to vote on going forward to ask for the declaratory judgment?
I'd like to hear what Jason has to say.
But if you put it on his agenda, you might be voting. You don't have to vote for it. Yeah, put it on your business and let's see what Jason.
Your business, declare, declare toward judgment toward.
Which already cost a decision.
Okay. We can talk to him about it before we start. You make a resolution.
Right now, we're paying eighteen thousand dollars a year to push it, so we can't tell them. No more than that. And, and if, if it ever goes to court, I'm afraid we're spending taxpayer dollars on private property. We don't own any lakes. Cause I already went that route. I already said, I wanna drain this lake and the USDA says, you don't own that lake. You can't drain it.
I understand about the private property part, so what about the one that's on federal property?
Do you think Mike Rogers could do something about that? But he stuck his, his head in the hole and I answered from his end, so.
Ron, you, you talk to Mike. Can you not reach out to him and ask him?
I mean, I could, but I, I don't know. I'm sure he, you know.
They're, they're probably trying to avoid it. Lee and I and Meg sat down and had a meeting with him. And you correct me if I'm not right, when I called the USDA to my office, they shaking in their boots and they'll do what I tell them. That was equipped, huh? But that's been over a year ago. He got this lady in Washington that was supposed to take care of it. I was calling her, I was emailing her. Now she won't even answer my calls and she won't return my emails. And like I said, the US, the two USDA guys said, go before a judge and get a ruling. So why don't we just go before a judge and get a ruling?
Let me tell you what they did to you. They gave you a name and they gave you somebody to call, like Whitney was the last one I dealt with. That with her for a year. Guess what?
She's gone.
She's gone. They let you deal with them and then what happened? I'm telling you, it's like, I, 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 and I, and so now I've started another, you know, cause Kyle the other day talking about wanting to get something set up, there's some money that we can go after. It's the old you, and then what happened is as soon as, and they say, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And then all of a sudden, well, you gotta call Meg or you gotta call Anderson or somebody else. I'm telling you, it's like, it's like they, it's like they both go from one office to the other and then you don't have nobody to talk to.
With, with.
And you don't, and you don't spend a year talking to these people.
Oh, over.
And now they're gone. I just like to find out the person you've been talking to has not been through across the hall. Telling you, this is.
Might as well work for another conversation.
Yeah. We got too much on us, move on.
All right, we're gonna put that on your, your business, ask for the declaratory judgment on the water chest. Any, anything you've gotten, anything?
Uh, yes, uh, Lee, um, no matter support on those federal grants, on the reeds and all, did you ever get a copy of that to bring for us? For us all to sign to get as many signatures as we could?
We, uh, no, we didn't. We never have seen anything of them. I mean, we're still, we're still moving forward. But they have us in that neighborhood.
We need to see, we can't get the governor on board. We have to win the prize. We need chat. We need everybody's behind us to sign those labels for the, look at us. As grants.
They never did send us, so.
Well, say we're going to buy a copy of one anyway, would they not?
They were supposed to best to have one that would fill in the blanks on, or that they could fill in the blanks and just send back and stuff like that.
The other thing on the, um, the road going up to, uh, Comen Lake, that, that, we're still trying to figure out how that tile three money works. Because it is supposed to cover re, uh, repairs and things on the road. We just gotta figure out where that money's going, that tile three. Or what, where it's being sent. It's being put in your department or it's being put in the, or is it being put, put tile three money?
I sent that information to you. It's, um, we, and I had a friend come up my head. I don't remember exactly how, but he gets, part of it, he gets a big chunk of it. Part of it has to be put aside into an account by itself that we don't do anything with really. It's thirty something thousand, I wanna say. And you got a part, portion of it and the school boards got a portion of it.
And, and it was eighty-seven, it was something like that.
I would, I would in my script.
Yes, and I guess what my question is because, um, I have that road that's going in the national forest that needs repair. That money should be used to repair that road. Same thing is some of that money should be, and it should be that money that's sitting aside. Should be with, uh, I have, you have a fire department and I have a fire department that does work in the national forest. And when they do that work, they should be able to bill us for their manpower and their equipment. And we should be providing funds back to that Joyce's camp, that Yalston's department. And if they have other departments coming in to help you out, when they're doing, same thing with, uh, Hollis. They should be getting a portion of it. So I just want the commission to be aware of that because I feel like these departments need to bill us for those. And that's gonna be that money that's sitting aside.
Yeah. I need that, that one, those, that's pretty specifically earmarked for like emergency services.
See, they have the laws there. I know it's not, it's probably been a year ago, Joyce, we might be questioning, they had to take the boat up. Jerry and I did and used the boat and then they had to call some of the other departments out. They didn't give any of that. And they under, under this tile three, they're supposed to invoice.
But.
For that.
I remember something about some kind of class or something, but it's an itemized invoice. You can't just say.
Oh, yeah.
We had ten hours and this is what it is. Gotta say, we had a boat and this.
For every piece of equipment, every, every piece of shovel they're using, every piece.
The boat, the truck, the boat.
Whatever they have to use, they get to bill today and their manpower. And they've never done it.
Is that being, being.
And it has to be in the national forests, so.
I think so. That's what we do.
But those were two things that I wanted to bring to the board of the commission that, that I feel like you're gonna be seeing invoices coming from the fire departments. From Hollis and from, um, Camp Three.
Check, so you're gonna send us check?
Somebody refreshed my memory. What did the lady come about road repair in the national forest? What did she come and talk to us about? Probably a year ago.
She was wanting to agree together for us just to do work. Inside of it, inside.
They were gonna write a check.
And they were just big.
They didn't have any.
Tile three is just, it's like, it's the Comen Lake road. I think you've got one more into, um, Kindland, but it is a dirt road, is it not?
Well, mine starts at, uh, mine starts about a week into the day. Mine's a day.
But, but this one goes all the way. I mean, it's been traveled a lot. That's what I'm trying to say. Right now, we've got a lot of traffic on that road.
Ms. Hugh, anything?
I do.
Okay.
I wanna talk about discretionary money.
Okay.
I've talked with the fire chiefs, uh, three fire departments, difficult. They're all in need like everyone else. And I want to give them fifteen hundred dollars each. And I have justification if, if you need it.
So that's forty-five hundred and you want, okay. So you want that on, uh, your business or a contingent?
Contingent would be good.
Contingent, okay.
I want a thousand given to the animal shelter for gravel to pull in out of the lot.
Okay. Is it, do you?
No. I want, uh, I just wanna tell you all this. I drove through McDonald's. They had a good sign that, uh, starting labor thirteen dollars a night. We have six people in the road department under thirteen dollars a night. And is that not terrible? That's terrible. And, uh, I wanted to ask, uh, the sheriff about the, you know, we talked about disposing of those handguns and things. Is there anything going on with that?
Uh, Craig is supposed to be checking on that piece of gun, checking. I would, I would love to be checking on that.
I just don't want to have to keep inventorying things forever and looking after them. I mean, that wouldn't.
I will.
Not me.
But tell, I think there's some wording about how it's condemned, I guess you'd say, or, um, that, and we gotta get with the judge to see because some of them are awarded to us in, in, in one way and then some of them are awarded to us in another way. And there's, we've been told there's some, one way that they're awarded to us, the only way we can get rid of them is we have to destroy them. We can't sell them. So we're gonna, though, we're gonna try to talk with the judge and see if there's a way we can, I guess, get it changed. I don't know where we can sell them, so.
No, we could do it.
More destroying.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I've got is, is for signage and stuff for the animal shelter, uh, we've got our lot cleared off. Uh, there's some things that we wanna do out there. I wanna make sure that our, that the money that we set aside goes towards the building. So some of the stuff that we've been doing is just volunteers that's been doing the work. So going back to what he's talking about, so I got with Lee about ordering signs. We start putting them up so people know where the animal shelter is gonna be. We got the address. Uh, working with, uh, Brianna, but I'm, I'm power, so they sending engineers out to look at figuring out how to get power to the location. Uh, the city, uh, water authority is working. They can't furnish water, but they are working, we are working with them about setting a meter and everything that won't cost the city money. But some of the groundwork that we're having to do, uh, I need about, I'm gonna take about six thou, or I'm gonna take about six thousand of my discretionary money uh, for signage and for additional groundwork that we're doing out there. Cause I want to use the money that we set aside for the building. I don't wanna infringe on that. So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have it all done and the groundwork completed. So then the building will be ordered. We're gonna put the fact that we should, we already got an open size of the building we got that we're gonna order. So it should, we should be having a building ready to be ordered by the end of January.
Alright, consent?
I think it's, whatever they think I've got to stand for.
Consent, do they want? Is that all you, is that?
I hope that's all I got.
Okay. Alright, so we're looking at the agenda, we're looking at surplus, uh, what is that?
No.
Not, no, I mean, that's one thing, yeah. Sheriff's, Sheriff's week. Uh, two, grant rider, three, environmental fund. Asking for five thousand dollars there. Mr. Hill, is yours fifty, five hundred, is that what yours come to?
To the fire.
And, and, uh, your total, was it a few times? Four stretch.
Total, yeah.
Four, four, four checks, but also you said a thousand to the, uh, so that comes to fifty-five, right?
Right.
Okay. And then it's six thousand for signs and some other work, right? If you'll give Emmett and, and make sure she understands what she's.
It's gonna be grabbing there, it's gonna be fields to gravel from, uh, Runny Hoats Hall and then. That's my one question, getting anything from, and, and for, the size is coming from Lee.
New business. Now, now you think of consent, is that your thing?
Um, surplus signs from the stores that.
Yeah.
That's a separate resolution, right?
I suppose it, the way we worded that, how Emmett cleans it up. Then new business, remaining treasure money, treasure money, how we're gonna. And then unsurplus the truck. And that's all I got. Am I missing anything?
The declaratory judgment.
Declaratory judgment, judgment, I'm sorry.
It's a new business.
And then, we're gonna look at the postage and I'm gonna talk to HR.
You gotta save the time.
What, man? I, I, I can say, put that up there on the environmental fund, that's on consent, right? Okay. Is that all good? Everybody good with that? Y'all ready to go home? Let's go home. Then we meet all for seventeen.